Good morning and hafare. The Committee on General Government Operation and Appropriation is now called to order. Today is Monday, May 20th, the time now is nine o'clock. In compliance with the open government law, the notice for this public hearing was posted on the Gov Guam Public Notice Panel portal, GTA TV Channel 21, Dokomo Channel 117, and disseminated via email to all centers and all main media broadcasting outlets on Monday, May 13, and on Thursday, May 19. The specific bill will be entertaining this morning as Bill 150-37 COR, sponsored, introduced by Speaker Theresa M. Terli, corresponded by Senator Duane Sinikus and Senator Jesse Luhan, an act to amend section 6225C, title four Guam Code annotated relative to authorizing Mayor's Council personnel hazardous pay during emergencies. And I would assume that it also will include other incidents, okay? We will begin with Bill, with this bill, and fiscal note was requested on July 18. It was received and disseminated to all centers via email by the Committee on Rules on January, on July 31st. Those participating on behalf of Bill Number 150-37 COR are invited to the panel. And we have today a mayor Jesse Alec and Mayor Anthony Chargalov and Vice Mayor Peter Benaventi. And with that, the general rules for this public hearing. Please provide my legislative staff with any documents for photocopying and distribution. Panel members are asked to remain in the room for questions or additional testimony as may be desired by members of the committee. Questions and testimonies shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda, which is specifically the bill. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual who is testifying is not permitted. Any bodies of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing room. Proper form and decorum shall be practiced by all present in the public hearing room for this proceedings. Individuals who failed to maintain proper form and decorum will be restricted from participating and will be escorted from the room. When you speak, please make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak into the microphone. Please state your name and your title for the record. I'd like to thank my colleagues that have joined me this morning. We have the sponsor of the bill, Speaker Theresa Terli, and we have Senator Tom Fisher. And with that, I'd ask the speaker to please give her opening on her bill. Thank you.
Sidoos Massey, Mr. Chair, and thank you, mayors, for being here this morning. Uh, so Bill 150 is an act to amend relative to authorizing Mayor's Council personnel hazardous pay during emergency. Sponsored by myself, co-sponsored by Senator Duane Sinikus and Senator Jesse Luhan. On Tuesday, May 23rd, one year ago, Guam was placed on Core One due to typhoon Mawar. The typhoon caused significant damage to infrastructure, homes, and utilities. Consequently, power outages, flooding, widespread debris affected the daily lives of the people and the island's overall functionality. And at the heart of this unprecedented natural disaster were the mayors and their staff, who responded swiftly to ensure that the people, including our manamko, were properly taken care of. This they do not only during typhoons, but all other types of hazardous conditions such as flooding. And just on a weekend, we'll get one day's notice or even same-day notice of flooding, immediate flooding in these, some villages and other hazardous conditions. And while all emergency responders were being paid hazardous pay throughout emergencies, the very lifeline of our community and villages were not. The mayors and their staff were pivotal in the emergency response, shoring up before it hits, evacuation, making sure that support and resources were in place, rescue, including checking on the well-being of their constituents before, during, and after these hazardous conditions, distributing supplies, coordinating with the other agencies for effective disaster management. In the current law, hazardous personnel are identified to be sworn officers of the Guam Airport Police, sworn conservation officers at Division of Aquatic and Wildlife Resources at the Department of Ag, sworn Guam Park Patrol Officers, employees of DYA engaged in juvenile detention and rehabilitation, employees designated by the Office of the Attorney General, sworn officers of the Guam Fire Department, employees at the Guam Behavioral Health and Wellness Center and the Department of Administration, who are directly exposed to unusual and dangerous contact situations as designated by the directors of those departments. So with that in mind, the intent of this bill is to include those employed and specifically identified by the Mayor's Council of Guam as hazardous duty personnel and entitle them to hazardous pay differential of 10% upon exposure to dangerous conditions in preparation for and following typhoons and in addition to during periods of other emergencies. By providing hazardous pay, we recognize the risks these personnel face and assure they're fairly compensated for their dedication and hard work, aligning their benefits with those of other emergency responders. And that's my introduction of this bill, and I urge my colleagues to support it. Sidoos Massey, Madam, uh, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I'll be supporting this bill. This is an easy one for me. I'd like to also recognize my colleague, Senator Duane Sinikus, who's joined us this morning. And with that, I'd ask the Mayor's Council President to go ahead and give his testimony for, in support of the bill and also from the other mayors.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. I, straightforward, Madam Speaker and senators, thank you for, uh, thank you for being here to hopefully support this bill, and thank you for recognizing the work the Mayor's Council does. Thank you for recognizing the, the duties of the, the men and women that work for us and with us. Thank you for recognizing that just because they work in the office, that they are not solely office personnel. And just like our community maintenance workers, if we need help inside, they're inside as well. So we, they are all cross-trained. And so this body recognizing the work of all of our men and women in the Mayor's Council of Guam is so important and so much appreciated. And I don't really need to go too much further into it because the speaker enumerated it, and I believe every one of you understand our responsibilities. So please, I do ask the, the 37th Guam Legislature to support Bill 150 because the Mayor's Council of Guam is in full support of the bill. Sidoos Massey.
Thank you, Mayor Alec. Uh, Mayor Chargalov?
Good morning, Senators, Speaker. I want to say thank you very much for this endeavor of pushing forward, Bill 150-37. I'm here to support the bill. Hazardous pay recipients are defined as people that, uh, take risks at performing their jobs and also something that can cause a physical injury or physical hardship. That really defines the mayor's office staff in terms of, you know, being exposed on a day, daily basis to these conditions. You know, there's a lot of things that we do, that the staff do, and they're very deserving of this. Quite honestly, what I like to see more than just maybe during emergencies, but even actually embedded into their salary already, because they are, these guys do this day in and day out. You know, just yesterday, as part of our parade celebration over in San Isidro Malolo, there was a dead dog on the side of the road, and the guys that were trying to deal with it was afraid that it would explode. They actually had to use a trash bag and slowly, you know, wiggle it in and all of that. And then also, we do a lot of the trash pickup, cleaning up our parks. The guys go and get exposed over at the Lejon landfill, you know? If you have never been there, the stent in that area gets into your clothes, the flies that they got to deal with, and you know, we do that more than three times a week. And that's just really a part of us just trying to do our job and trying to keep us safe. We also do funeral escorts where we're in fact out there exposed to the heavy traffic, having to stop these cars. Not a lot of them are, are receptive of us stopping traffic, so of course, we don't have the blue lights. They literally just, in some cases, we're almost getting hit doing that. Our guys are exposed to heavy lifting of washers, dryers, and stuff that people throw alongside the road. These are just some of the small things that we go through. But again, I know that our staff is very deserving. Maybe about three weeks ago, there was a altercation out at the Ina Lan pool. Our guys are also considered 911 because of there's no eastern precinct over in our side, any eastern police precinct. The time it takes for any police officer to travel from Hogad over to Ina Lan, by then, somebody's seriously hurt or dead. And so our staff are called upon to take care of these matters, and we have to be cordial, civil, and respectful, but also our lives are at stake because all you need is some belligerent guy intoxicated, overly intoxicated to just jeopardize or, or harm any of the staff. There's, and of course, I know the speaker brought about the flooding. That's not as prevalent as you would molesto, but in a lot of cases, you know, that's, that's what happens. It might be heavy, heavy rains happening in molesto, not a drop in Ina Lan. Yet those guys down there are out there cleaning storm drains, bridges, removing all the bamboos and the like, just to ensure that those residents don't get flooded in. And this just happens at 2:30 in the morning and what have you. So for many years, our, the mayoral staff have undergone this type of environment, work environment, but have never been justly compensated. And because this introduction now, I want to say this has been a long time coming, very well deserving, and I'm thankful that you senators are in the position where you're going to support this measure. I really feel that, uh, like I said, I, I think the ultimate thing is embed the 10% into the existing salary. And while there's a lot of other, uh, I want to say, uh, injustice or lack of parity, this is just some of the stuff, and I'm hoping that we work together more to address a lot of the, the issues, whether it be lacking incremental pay, night differential, and the like. But again, thank you very much and for the opportunity to voice our concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor?
Buenos, zan hafare, Mr. Chair. Madam Speaker, senators, good morning. Wau si Peter John Benaventi, isegundo na mehot, giseng song deredu. I'm here today to represent all our staff and most especially our CMW workers throughout all 19 villages on this beautiful island we call home. I am in total support of Bill 150-37, an act to amend 6225C, title four of the GCA relative to authorizing MCLG personnel hazardous pay during emergencies such as natural disasters, and perhaps maybe to include the picking up of dead animals and other hazardous wastes when it comes to illegal dumping that our staff may have to encounter. It is too often that we at the mayor's offices get called upon to do certain tasks that are supposed to be under the realm of certain Gov Guam agencies, but yet we are called upon and we respond. Our staff don't wear badges nor do they hold a degree of such short, but yet called upon to assess and handle certain situations at hand that are not in our realm. A lot of the staff that we do, a lot of the stuff that we do at the mayor's offices come from the heart and passion that we have to serve our community with loyalty and commitment as public servants, and it don't matter what side of the party you want. A prime example as to why our staff should be eligible for hazardous pay during certain situations is that at the break of dawn, right after Mawar hit, me and my staff were out cleaning the main roads so that the emergency responders can respond in a timely manner. Although we were still in condition one at a time, we were out there in the elements and exposed to all sorts of danger, but we just had to do it. It's, it's, it's kind of funny on that day as we were clearing on the main roads within our village, a certain agency head passes by us and says, "Vice, what are you guys doing?" I turned around and said, "Where are your guys?" Our staff likewise with all the mayor's staff were out on this very day clearing roads. Our staff even left their homes in the midst of all this disaster to go out and do what they need to do to clear the roads. Recognizing the increased risks and challenges that our staff have to, have to go through knowing that they aren't certified or nor, or not in our jurisdiction, but they still get them done to satisfy our people. Our staff already don't get pay increases as often as they should. So giving them a hazard pay can be an incentive for all their hard work and dedication. So once again, I am fully in support of Bill 150, and thank you, senators, for bringing this up. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Benaventi. I'd like to also recognize my colleagues that have joined us this morning. We have Senator Brown and Senator Sinikus. And that's, that's about it. Um, simple ques, simple statement to make. Um, Mayor Alec, the Mayor's Council will be the ones to identify who they are, correct? Okay. Once you do that and you guys come to an agreement like what Mayor Chargalov brought up, settle it, and let's just move on with it, okay? Cover as many as possible. Because if you don't, then don't look at us for it, because we're, we're not, we're not the mayor's council. You guys are. You guys handle it. We don't want to be micromanagers, okay? That's not our job. Um, and, and when BBMR identified the fiscal impact, I know the Mayor's Council's going to look at their budget and determine what additional funds they may need or might need, and then we'll work it from there. I know you're not going to say everybody and anybody. You'll figure it out and come to conclusions, and then we're just, we're here to back you, and you're here to back us. We're, we're here to take care of each other. Because it's, you know, and that's how we should be always doing business. Should all be working together as one. And with that, um, Madam Vice, um, Madam Speaker, do you have any comments or questions, or you'd like to be last, and you'll close? Oh, yeah, we have other mayors. We have, uh, the mayor from our, our village of Hogadna, Mayor Juan Cruz. You would like to come up to the panel and make any comments? No, and we got... You're, you're good? Okay. And I know we got the Vice Mayor of Agad, Agad rules. I am surprised he didn't say that yet. Hogad, Hogad, oh. Does anyone else like, would you like to testify? Uh, Vice Mayor? No. Are you good? All right, okay. Madam Speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And again, thank you, mayors, for being here. Thank you, colleagues, as well. Um, I was just recalling back. So the bill was introduced July 2023, and I think it was at that time when we really heard from you directly, uh, you know, what your response had, had to have been during Mawar, and we, we heard about it days after Mawar as well. However, we did not know that we're not receiving hazardous pay at that time. So I'm glad to be able to bring this bill up to the body's attention and to rectify that. I'm hoping, uh, maybe we can just make an amendment to mirror a little bit the Department of Behavioral Health's language for those other employees where it says, um, it's in this case, the director shall identify the direct exposure personnel and ensure that all affected personnel receive the hazardous pay differential. So it would be up to the Mayor's Council to make their protocol of how to do that. And I think that would be flexible enough for your situations that you handle.
Madam Speaker, that is correct. If, if that language is necessary to include, then we would support that so that we have the flexibility.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And with that, I'd like to also introduce, uh, recognize the colleague that have joined us, Senator Roy Canata. And following, I'd have Senator Tom Fisher to ask any comments or questions for the panel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I support this as well. Uh, I think this is, I agree with you. I think this is an easy one. And I would just like to thank Speaker Terli and Senator Duane and Senator Jesse for this is a good catch. And I'm glad, I'm glad they came up with it. So thank you all. Thank you all for your service and your personnel, too. So like I said, this is an easy one, sir.
Thank you, sir. Senator Sinikus, do you have any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to thank also the, the support that we're getting, Senator Fisher, thank you, sir, and, uh, also, um, the speaker for introducing this measure. It's a long time coming, you know? Hanging out down there in Agad, I see all the mayor's office staff, you know, just going back and forth, whizzing, zinging, you know, to and from, making sure that funeral services, you know, go well for, for our constituencies, constituency, and also the, the other hard worker that I asked also Mayor, uh, Alec to visualize for us how they, they do those , uh, removals, the expired animals. I mean, it's just, it just, the, the thing just goes on and on. I remember as a customs officer, we used to get hazardous pay and night differential, and it made all the difference, you know? Even if it was just 10%, it made a lot of difference. It'd be, it was, uh, one of the ways I was able to get a bachelor's degree and work, work through the night and also make a little extra money for my family. But it, it highlighted the sacrifices that we had to do, you know, in order to obtain that, that I was working midnight shift. And then when I was a, uh, army, uh, when I was a soldier and I was deployed, you know, we got imminent danger pay, which is just a little bit bump off, bump from, you know, regular pay, but it, it highlighted the seriousness of what we were doing. And I, I think this pay, this type of pay is, uh, is, uh, so the long time coming. It's very necessary and it's deserving of the, the amount of work that, that, that you guys, you know, showed her. And so I'm very supportive and we'll be, we'll be rooting for this bill and hopefully we get the entire Congress to support it. And I'd like to thank you again, as reiterate, Senator Fisher, you know, thank you for your service and the service of your, of all those hardworking men and women who have to endure that, that type of, that type of work. But thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Sinikus. Senator Brown, would you like to give any comments or questions to the panel?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Certainly, good morning to all our mayors that are here. I know Mayor Alec was up bright and early on the radio this morning, making us laugh and... I know Mayor Chargalov started early because he has a long drive all the way up here, including our Vice Mayor from Dedido. You know, I, I appreciate this effort. I mean, I, I normally am very critical when we look at increases in operations of government, but certainly the work that you do, as we say, is so direct to the community that we need more of it. We're up to a billion dollars in this budget, and I think most residents look around and wonder how does that benefit them because they don't necessarily see, um, you know, that direct connection between them and their government because the government, after a while, we see it exists for itself, and it's always here for itself. But in terms of direct service to our community and where the needs are there, you do, do that work. I mean, I, I hear about the dead dogs, I hear about all those things, and we know that that comes with the job. I mean, if you didn't want to do that, you'd be doing something else. But in this particular case, I think this helps make the staffing that you have a more professional staff and gives them the sense of pride and responsibility for the work they've already been doing. And they, they've not been given that opportunity. I mean, it's almost like, oh, they're, they're over there somewhere doing something, but, you know, they're not in their uniforms and all professional like we just had not too long ago with the airport just Friday. They don't get to come in and, and put that show on. So certainly, I'm supportive of this legislation. I think the, you know, as the speaker mentioned, I think it would be good ahead of time, though, that, you know, on an annual basis, you have an updated list in each of your villages so that everybody knows, including the staff themselves. You yourself, of course, when unexpected, I mean, a year ago, who would have thought we were in a, you know, in the midst of recovering from a major super typhoon? But have that available so that it's there for public review. Your village knows it, you know it, the public knows it, and then there's no issue because we don't want anyone to say, "Hey, I got forgotten," or "How come so-and-so has it and I don't?" Depending on the, the kind of work that is being done. So other than that, I, I'm very supportive of this. I'm hopeful to see, at some point, I hope we do address the inequities with regards to the distribution of funds. I know it's been a very controversial issue over the years. I mean, I started here 30 years ago, and it wasn't resolved then, and it hasn't been resolved since then on how do we, how can we equitably like have a base budget for the mayors, for all the villages, and then depending, be it the population? I know Mayor Savara's recommended, you know, every 5,000 population, it increases this amount of appropriation so that the larger villages, because we see the inequities between the smaller villages and larger villages. How can we do that? So our residents overall, you know, we're covering as much as we can considering the amount of jurisdiction. I mean, Dedido, 44,000 people is a little different than a village that, you know, one of our southern villages is not here that has less than 1,000 residents, but your, your budgets within such a short distance of each other, it doesn't make a lot of sense. And then we can do it in a way that it's more equitable. And then as projects, maybe there's a certain amount that can be allotted every year. So I know Mayor Chargalov, you've always brought that concern up about they're like key projects you'd like to improve in your village this year. You can justify it, you can deliver on it, but you're not going to get the funding for it. And so maybe those are things that we need to look at so that our people, you know, feel there's some improvement. I think we don't, we keep, even if we can't get everything done all at once, but if we know eventually, you know, my street at some point is going to get paved or my pothole's going to get fixed or, you know, the signage in the village is going to get improved, there's some beautification or certainly the sports facilities that we want our children to, to be able to use and experience because we have so many external forces that are negative around them. We'd like to see them investing their time in something that's healthy and productive and contributing to the community. So I hope at some point soon we can sit down and resolve that because we have a huge, humongous government that's getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And as I think about it, I ask myself, I ask other people out there that I meet, "How is this benefiting you?" And I don't get a sense of feeling that even with all this cash infusion we've had in the last few years, I don't know how this tangibly has improved anyone's life. I don't know moving forward how it's improving anyone's quality of life. Education's still a problem, crime is still a problem, healthcare definitely, and the issues affecting our hospital are still a problem. So, um, you know, our time will come and go, and I don't know if they're going to get resolved, but we'd like to see some incremental improvements towards that. So I'm very supportive of this with regards to the mayors, and thank you for the work that you do. It's a tough job, you know? It's like on the totem pole, where do we fit in? But the work that you do really does matter. In my village, I'm going to miss our mayor who's retiring this, uh, this year because he's always accessible. I mean, you know, he's just literally a phone call away or a message away, and as busy as he is, he always makes a chance to respond, to address their concerns, as I'm sure you do with your constituencies in your village, and it really makes a difference from a community standpoint and as a resident to get that kind of response on issues that are affecting our people. So thank you for taking the time to be here, and you certainly have my support on this bill. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Canata, do you have any comments or questions for the panel?
Nothing of question material, but just wanted to thank the mayors and their staff for their continuous hard work. Certainly, this legislation should be passed, and I wish we did it sooner so that the staff and you guys could be compensated during the typhoon recovery. But I look forward to hearing this legislation proceed and move its way through its procedures. Nothing further, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Canata. And I'll ask now the speaker to make any closing remarks before I proceed to close.
Sidoos Massey, Mr. Chair. And again, thank you to the mayors who have come down here in support of the bill and have testified. And more importantly, thank you for what you have done for us all these years without the hazardous pay. I'm, I'm very, um, still shocked. And, um, this doesn't include the mayors itself, themselves. It includes your staffs. And I know that some of you have been mayor for a very long time, so your staff have been there for a very long time, and as Mayor Chargalov said, they don't get increments, they don't get a lot of things that other classified employees of the government are receiving. But I want to thank them very much for their dedication to their villages, to, to all of the people of Guam, and, and really for doing it without the recognition or the pay. But hopefully, we can work on all of those as well. It's just, I guess, an unexpected testament to some of your longevity that those employees have also been there very long time, or they've been able to work with different mayors. And so that's a testament to them and their dedication to the village. So again, thank you to all of you. Sidoos Massey, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As Mayor Chargalov, you wanted to make a...
One last comment. I just wanted to say there's only five of us here today, uh, mayors and vice mayors, but truthfully, all the mayors wish they could be here today to support Bill 150, but they're all doing hazardous work right now. So thank you, though. They all send me that text to make sure I said that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Chargalov. And you know, as, as you mentioned earlier... And you know, as, as you mentioned earlier tonight in Renzo and increments, remember the budget's in your hands. We determine if we approve it or not, but if you don't put in that, that incremental portion in your budget, don't, don't look at us, okay? It'll be on you. The mayor's council is aware of this, and when you mentioned night differential, that's something I, I leaned over to the Speaker and asked her, because you, you made that statement, it's germane to the bill. We can figure out a way how we can see how, what we can do. But I know that not everybody in the mayor's council is open after five, so that's how the mayor's council has to figure out how that, you would apply that. Because I know there's going to be circumstances where the mayor's office is going to respond. If there's a fire, something's going on, I know you're going to respond, and, and it could be after five, but that, that you guys will determine. And with that, I want to thank everyone for attending this hearing and providing feedback and suggestion. Bill Number 150-37COR Public Hearing is now adjourned, and you've got six votes here. You got seven total with another correspondent on the bill, so I don't think it's been an easy one in session. And with that, the time now is 10... Correction, 9:28. Thank you. Sidos Massey. Please be safe. Thank you.